Please stand and join me with the pledge.
Flag of the United States of America.
I'd like to begin the meeting with a moment of silence for the following individuals. Mary Ann Gorski, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Diane Ackerly, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Betty Wooliver, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Marlena Der-Rahman, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Jeremiah Huff, a student of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Couple of proclamations this evening. But with the first one. Throughout our school buildings, school library media specialists have an impact on the district's students. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The school library media specialists of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality educational services. To honor the school library media specialists of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Maurizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare April 4th, 2025 as School Library Media Specialist Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion for that? And Beth, any questions? All those in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you for all you do. And I'm going to read the second one and then Dr. Ward and I will step up. Throughout our school buildings, school occupational therapists have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School occupational therapists of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school occupational therapists of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Maurizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare April 8th, 2025 as School Occupational Therapist Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion? Josh and Mark, any questions? All those in favor, that's unanimous, and thank you to them. Hey, for our first presentation this evening, I would like to welcome OCM Bosie's Deputy Superintendent, Colleen Vigiano, alongside some of our students that attend OCM Bosie's to give us a presentation on some of the programmings that they're involved. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. I love coming here each year to give an update on OCM Bosie's and our partnership with the North Syracuse Central School District. We appreciate all of your support. And this year, we said, let's get it right and make sure you hear from the students because we know that that is really what you're interested in hearing about. So I'm just going to take a few minutes and give you a quick overview of our programs in CTE and New Vision. Before I do that, I just want to point out that I handed you the snapshot. And what that snapshot is, is just an overview of programs and services that you receive from OCM Bosie's. And so the pictures that you see are pictures of your students. Also, there's some quantitative and qualitative data around budget as well as the services that you access through our various departments. So, you know, at your pleasure, you can review that. I just wanted you to have that as a resource. But today, we're really going to be focusing on CTE and New Vision. And I'm happy to say that the number of students enrolled in your career in technical education and New Vision programs has increased over the past three to four years. And what that tells me is that you're really committed to meeting the individual needs of your students in your district. And I think you'll find out tonight that it's well worth it. So just a quick overview. We have two main CTE campuses, one at Thompson Road, which is where your students may attend, or the Cortlandville Campus. We have fifteen different CTE programs across the three counties that we serve. We have seven embedded CTE programs in businesses. And Jack from Driver's Village, our auto tech program, you'll hear from him and the benefits of what an embedded program model provides. Our CTE program's a half-day program as well as New Vision. We have five embedded New Vision programs, which are located in businesses. And those are half-day immersion programs for seniors. So here is just a listing of all of our CTE and New Vision program offerings. The way that we decide to run CTE programs is we look at Department of Labor statistics. Statistics, we look at job growth. We look at what employers are looking for. And we survey our students to see what they're interested in. And that's how we design the CTE programs. So students, when they come to us as CTE students in their junior and senior year, they have the opportunity to earn five high school credits, three CTE credits, a credit in scientific inquiry, one in data analytics, and three to six college credits through articulation agreements with colleges, which is not something that everybody always realizes that when students come to Bosie's, they actually have the opportunity to earn college credits or have credits transfer when they go into their college. And then for New Vision students, they earn three CTE credits as well as a credit for English twelve and a half a credit for participation in government, a half a credit for economics, and three to six college credits. So what we're going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to Derek, who's right here, am I right? And he's going to share with you a little bit about his experience in the New Vision Medical Professions Program.
So one of the main reasons I chose the program because I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do in my future. So I joined the program. I applied for the program to see if nursing was where I wanted to do. So through the experiences in clinical and seeing the hospitals, it not only opened my eyes to a bunch of experiences that I never thought I would enjoy, I realized that it is where I want to be. The anatomy and physiology class through OCC has really helped prepare me for college. It's given me a jumpstart on the knowledge and the course rigor for college. After I graduate this year, I'm going to attend Niagara's four-year nursing program where I'll play rugby.
Very cool.
After that, I plan on applying for a job in a hospital, hopefully in nursing and pediatric oncology. And after that, I will return to school to become a nurse anesthetist.
Very much. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mallory, who's going to talk about her experience in the culinary program.
Hello, I'm Mallory Westles, and I'm a senior in the Culinary Arts Program. I first learned about Bosie's through a presentation at the junior high school. The Culinary Arts Program seemed like a place that I would want to be. So I did a little research and found an open house day. This open house day was very beneficial. It allowed me and my parents to go visit Bosie's and learn more about the programs and what they offered from the teachers themselves. I went to one my sophomore year and instantly knew that Bosie's is the place for me. I baked a lot during the COVID shutdown and really found a passion for it. So I chose this program because it seemed like a fun environment to explore my love for the food industry, and I couldn't have been more correct. My favorite part about Bosie's was getting to meet kids from all over the area that all shared the same love for food. And getting to work together as a team with my classmates every day created bonds that will last me a lifetime. I have learned so much over the last two years in this program, not only from the hospitality and hands-on skills of the kitchen and bakery, but also the other side of the ins and outs of the food industry through the textbooks we learn from and our teachers. Bosie's has prepared me for my future goals in life. I was accepted into the Culinary Institute of America, where I'll be studying baking and pastry arts as well as food business management in the fall. My dream one day is to open my own bakery and cafe. I'm forever grateful for Bosie's and the culinary program for educating me and giving me the skills to accomplish my goals. And lastly, I would like to thank the North Syracuse Central School District for giving kids like me the opportunity to go to a school as great as Bosie's.
Thank you, Mallory. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Catalina, who's going to talk about her experience in the Physical Therapy Professions Program.
Hi, my name is Catalina Lawrence. I'm part of the Physical Therapy Program. School, like Mallory explained, offered a presentation about Bosie's. I got a packet saying there was medical occupations, and one of them was physical therapy. It got me really interested in what it was because at the time, I had a general idea but didn't really know what it was like. And so I decided to figure out more about the profession. I got into this class, the only CNS student, and the people in my class become my family, and I'll talk to them for generations on. It's a great way to figure out if this is truly what you want to do when you get older. So many opportunities to go and explore different occupations, not just physical therapy, but also anything in the medical field, anything related to rehab. You go on clinicals and really truly see if you want to be in this, if this is something you want to do and if it's enjoyable for you as well as patients. After Bosie's, when I graduate, I'll be going to Assumption University for biology for four years, then transferred to get my doctorate while also playing soccer at Assumption University.
Great, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jack, who is at our embedded CTE program at Driver's Village. And he's going to tell you a little bit about how he heard about Bosie's and what his journey has been since he's been in the auto tech program.
Hello, my name is Jack, and I'm a part of the auto technology program at Driver's Village. And I heard the program through a friend that attended the program for the first couple of days. And I decided to give it a shot. I've always liked cars from a very young age. My dad was always into old hot rods and Chevys and Pontiacs. And I figured maybe that's something I want to do for a job. And as soon as I got in there, I liked the whole feel of the place, like I was at an actual dealership. And I could see what goes on there and how everything is run down. Every couple of weeks, we get to go on internships with actual technicians from dealerships in the mall area like Volkswagen, Dodge, Chevy. And we get to be right next to the actual technician working on actual customers' cars. And on top of that, we get to work on cars in the used car warehouse for job sheets. And every other, every single week, we get new cars in. So on each job sheet we get, we get to perform on a different type of car because every single car is going to be different from the last. And I feel like that's something that is very nice about being in a classroom that I'm in right now at Driver's Village. And another thing that's very cool that I think is after a couple of months of taking the Bosie's program, I was able to get a job as an hourly technician over at Dodge. So I get to work at an actual dealership on customers' cars. And eventually, for the future, I plan on going to OCC and doing their two-year program and eventually moving up to the flat rate position at my work, which includes getting paid by the job, which involves more hands-on and longer diagnosing. But I feel like Bosie's is definitely preparing me for that. And I'm glad that I have been able to be in this program because it allowed me to figure out what I want to do with my life. So I just want to thank everyone here for allowing this to even be possible.
I kind of want to stop here because the students are so amazing, and you can hear the various journeys they have. But I do want to just share with you a few other pieces that our students have the opportunity to participate in when they come to Bosie's and are in our program. So students have the opportunity to participate in Skills USA, which is a national student leadership organization where they have the opportunity to compete in their career fields with other students. First regionally, then at the state level, and then some students have the opportunity to go on to nationals. And so we've had about thirty students across OCM Bosie's qualify in place in first, second, or third at our regional competition. We always have a really strong showing. And we also have students, and you'll notice at your graduation, students wearing purple cords. That's because they've qualified for the National Technical Honor Society based on their grades and their participation and their success. And so here are the students from North Syracuse who placed at the regional competition and will be going on to the state competition at the regional fairgrounds. And you'll see Catalina Lawrence, who is here, is one of those students who placed second in the Health Knowledge Bowl. So wishing her lots of luck as she goes on. And also, Mallory had an injury that took her out of the regional competition, but she does have an opportunity to participate in the state competition. So best of luck to her as well. And if by chance, any of the board members are interested in seeing the Skills USA event, it's an amazing event. The competition at the state is right at the New York State Fairgrounds on April 24th. Here are the best viewing times if you decide to attend. If you want to let Dr. Ward know, then we'll be happy to meet you. And we'll take you around to see some of your students compete. But on that note, I just want to say, echo the appreciation of the students here tonight for your support as a board. Also want to give special thanks to Bob Crabtree, our President of our OCM Bosie's Board, and Joan Reeves, who's our Vice President, who is also here supporting us tonight. So thank you very much. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think it's a question, it might be a comment. Question, I'm going to direct it towards. No, I heard a theme throughout, but you guys had, you spoke holes, which I found really interesting. So you had mentioned when you went there, you were interested in nursing, but you hadn't really, weren't really sure. But it's, what happened that you have a very specific pathway now? Just a little bit, what happened to just give you that kind of vision?
Well, when I first went into the program, I wanted to be a history teacher. Because my dad's a teacher, I like to teach your benefits, summer vacations. But once I got to start going to the hospitals, I really liked nursing. And I liked the patient interactions, I liked the connections people built with them. I'm like, that's what I want to have. I work with kids every day. That's my job, I'm a gymnastics coach. So I knew I wanted to work with kids. So that's why I chose pediatric and oncology, so I could build a relationship with the kid and their family over time instead of just like one and done. After that, nurse anesthetist, that was just something my dad kind of brought up as like an end goal. Like, I'm like forty or something, going back to school to make a little more money. Other than that, that's better.
I remember forty, when I was forty, I was already fifty-two, but. Well, thank you. I mean, I just, I think it's fascinating that it just, I hope your peers know, you don't need to know everything you want to do. And, yeah. Have you worked at all the dealerships in Driver's Village?
I've been on internship at all the dealers besides Mitsubishi and Kia. We just pretty much get to work on.
Did you work with the Corvette guy at Chevy?
Yes, yes.
That's Dean, he's a former student of mine back.
Oh, really? Yeah, he's, he's a great guy.
Just drop this name, tell them.
Yeah, whenever I'm at Chevy, I usually always pick him to internship with.
Other student that.
Great to hear.
Over thirty years.
Yeah.
Congrats, I mean, that's a great. Well, thank you for sharing.
I just want to, I've already said this to our students here, but it takes, you know, it's very impressive for a student to leave their high school where all of their friends are and really kind of take a leap of faith and enroll in a Bosie's program. So I just want to say, I know all of you as far as you're glad you took that leap of faith, right? And Derek, I just have one comment for you. Because Derek spends time with my daughter, he's in the same class. And if you could just talk Sadie tomorrow into going into your career and being a nurse, even though I can't say the word, anesthetist. You know, I know that that would be a great career path for her as well. So whatever you can do to help me out.
Okay, well.
Thanks, thanks, Bob, for not letting me ask my question. This was fantastic. I just was hoping, and I think that I honestly asked you this question last year, if you can just explain a little bit the difference between the CTE program and the New Vision program? Because I know that there's differences, and I remember it coming up and want to hear it again.
Absolutely. So the CTE program is a two-year program. Students come in their junior year, and they come for a half-day their junior year and a half-day their senior year. And so it's a longer program. And most of those programs are located at the Bosie's campus with the exception of a few embedded programs, like the one that Jack's in at Driver's Village. The New Vision program is a half-day program for seniors. And it's an immersion model where the students spend most of their time onsite in businesses or in hospitals.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Wow, those students were awesome. That was a great, great presentation. Another tough act to follow. So good evening. I have a rather brief presentation tonight. I think this truly is an update. Not a lot of new information to share, so I'm going to hit a few highlights and remind you of a few things that we've been talking about through the process. So, you know, obviously, everything we do, we keep going back to our strategic plan and making sure we're honoring that. Just to remind folks, you know, why we're where we are, this is a challenging budget season. It's about inflation, it's about the hangover from coming off of the CURSA and ARP funding. And it's also about not getting the state aid that we need in order to sustain our programming. I do want to say with all the political conversations that are going on about cuts at the federal government, we are concerned about federal funding, but we are not going to attempt to address that in this funding cycle, in this budget cycle. It's not, at this stage of the game, we're making the assumption, and it may be a bold assumption, that we will, these cuts will not impact our '25, '26 budget. New information, I guess new, this information came out right after my last presentation. Inflation's down slightly. A couple of things are noteworthy. Food prices coming down, energy prices coming down, and an overall inflation of 2.8%. You know, we'll take whatever we can get, obviously, as inflation decreases, it takes pressure off our budget. We've talked a lot about foundation aid. I know that both the Senate and the Assembly are making a push to see if the governor will agree to a higher level of foundation aid. We're not optimistic, and, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to adopt a budget here, and we may not know what the final state budget is. So right now, we're just going with the numbers that the governor communicated in her governor's budget proposal. Good news, last time I met with you, we had a $6.8 million deficit. So a couple of things that, you know, I'm really proud of our team. We've spent a lot of time talking about the budget, explaining some of the challenges we have. And so when our directors came forward and put their final budgets together, we hadn't concluded our director presentations before the last board meeting. Our directors were able to cut some money out of their budgets and really tighten their belts. And our treasurer, Vince Love, has been really watching the market closely and determined that we could increase our interest income. So you'll see that we increased that by $500,000. And I know the feds held rates in their last meeting, they're talking still about two cuts this year. But we feel like, you know, again, we're very cautious. We don't want to be too conservative as we project our revenues because that will make us make decisions that are disadvantageous to our kids. So we're trying to be realistic with our revenue projections. And the combination of the director's cuts and expenses and the additional revenue, we're down to $6 million deficit now, down from 6.8. deficit now, down from 6.8. No change in the tax cap from, this is what we filed with the Comptroller's Office, a 2.91% increase. We, just to remind folks, one of the components of the tax cap calculation is pilot revenue, and we did not receive a pilot agreement, or a pilot agreement has not been put in place with Micron yet, so the '25-'26 school year will not reflect a Micron pilot in our tax cap calculation, therefore will not change for '25-'26. The only thing I want to, I probably didn't do as good a job of this last time, so I just want to emphasize, we really, I'm just really, again, you know, proud of our bargaining unit leaders. We worked really hard on our contract negotiations and, you know, worked together, and I think we came up with really good contracts. I emphasized the last time I was with you that, you know, we are looking at a 4.25% increase in our compensation for employees next year, but that came with concessions. So I just point out in the health benefits line that, you know, our employees have agreed to an increase in healthcare costs to them that will partially offset the district's healthcare benefits, and so that's very advantageous to the district, and so I just wanted to emphasize that. On the expenditure side, as I mentioned, we were able to tighten some things up, we still have some work to do, and we hope to, at our next meeting with the board, to be able to share with you some of the details of that. Again, you know, generally, what we're focused on is looking at attrition, looking where we can potentially eliminate positions due to declining enrollment, and also reevaluate those positions that we hired in connection with ARP and CURSA funding that we no longer have. More to come on that as we get to the next board meeting. On the transportation side, we've, we're going to ask the board tonight to approve this proposition for the purchase of buses. It's consistent with what we've done in the past. The only, the only change is that instead of buying 1065-passenger kind of traditional buses, we've taken two of those, and we've added larger fuel tanks and some cargo storage. We think that that's going to better serve our co-curricular and extracurricular activities as well as field trips. And at this stage of the game, we don't have an update on our fund balance. I think we're assuming right now that we're going to spend the budget this year. We'll know more about that over the next, over the coming months. That's pretty much the latest update. Again, tonight, we'll ask the board to approve the capital project referendum. Just to reemphasize, we, Al Sterpy has been wonderful helping us to pay for the pool, and he secured a $3 million grant for us, but in order to spend that grant, we need voter approval, and so we're going to ask the board to approve that proposition tonight. There's a picture of our two pool, two swim coaches, and our board president and Al Sterpy. And that's pretty much it for tonight. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Done. Hey, we have no comments from the audience this evening, but as always, we welcome anyone who wishes to come and speak before. Now to Board of Education Committee reports, Mr. Thorne.
I'm at the policy committee, and I'm happy to announce that we have our final Erie One BOSI's policy manual on our agenda. Helped with that effort.
Legislative Committee will be meeting, our next meeting, April 2nd. It will be at the junior high library for the committee, Josh, Paul, Matt, and myself, and the rest of the committee, because of kindergarten registration here. And also, it's going to be a short meeting, because Dr. Ward and Mr. Crabtree and Paul are going to the annual BOSI's meeting over on Thompson Road. I ask you to send emails. It takes approximately three to five minutes to do it. I forward to everybody, including the administrators around this table, Senator Ryan's, wasn't that wonderful? He was specific about what he's doing in Albany for the North Syracuse Central School District. That is the best email, and I forwarded it to Mr. Carolla also, that, you know, that is just outstanding. I also sent one to John Mannion, because we're looking at a federal situation, as Don just said, that's unstable, is the word I will use, and he got back to us. Every day I see John Mannion on a video, he's fighting for us, he's fighting for Center New York, and especially for schools. So I'm going to ask Jill tomorrow to resend it, I'll send it to you in the morning when I'm up, and please, it takes two seconds to put your name instead of my name, up come your legislators, and then you can use the form, which is basically everything that we want. So that's just something I would like you to do. BOSI's, you've got a report today from me. Also, you always get the agenda, so you can go through and see everything that we do at a BOSI's meeting. We will be making a visit to BOSI's this Wednesday, and the young lady, I think, will be making, help make lunch, and then I'm going there at supper, supper for something else. But if you are interested, you still can go on Wednesday. I've talked to you, Azariah, we can get her there, we can get her there. I'll talk to Mrs. Hill, because I think she'd like to see her fellow students and what they're doing at BOSI's. The other item is the annual meeting. You're all invited to the annual meeting on April 2nd, Thompson Road. Dinner provided by the students at 6 o'clock, and then there will be a very short meeting on the budget, which you will be voting on, the administrative budget, April, the end of April, when we look at our budget. And that is about it.
First, I just want to say, congratulations to the show this weekend, Once Upon a Mattress, was fantastic, and I know a lot of hard work goes into that, from everyone, from parents who are volunteers, to students, to directors, to everyone involved, so we really enjoyed that, my family and I, so that's a piece of it, and we won a gift basket, so even better for the Ward family, so. The other piece I just want to mention this evening is kind of a somber one. And today, this afternoon, many of us went to Jeremiah Huff's calling hours. And for me, I've been a superintendent for eight years, and this is the first student that has passed away, you know, while I've been superintendent. And so I just think it's appropriate to read Jeremiah Huff's obituary, because it says a lot of awesome, wonderful things about him. Jeremiah Huff of Clay passed away on St. Patrick's Day, Monday, March 17th. He was a vibrant, adventurous young boy who lived life with a heart full of curiosity and spirit of determination. A proud student at Gillette Road Middle School, he excelled as an honor roll student. Jeremiah had a natural enthusiasm for the world around him, especially the outdoors. He loved spending time in nature, exploring his passion of rocks, fishing and camping. His love for the water was matched only by his energetic enjoyment of sports. He played basketball, baseball and soccer. He excelled at skateboarding, taking lessons at Black Mamba to hone his skills. In addition to his many interests, Jeremiah was a loving pet owner. He had a menagerie of pets. Beyond his love for adventure, Jeremiah had a unique personality that shone through in his kindness and warmth. He had a particular fondness for music, especially Metallica, Eminem and Pantera. Jeremiah had a love for talking and often started conversations with his favorite phrase, "Can I tell you something?" His curiosity about the world and people made him a joy to be around. Jeremiah is remembered for his bright smile, his boundless energy, and his genuine love for life. And I will tell you, those words in his obituary couldn't describe him any better as you talk to any particular student who knew him very well at Gillette. So our thoughts are with the Huff family. Thank you.
Have any other board comments? No? All right, Azariah, oh, you do.
I have some suggestions that have come up before. We've had a retreat, but it was a long time ago, it was when Mandy first got on the board and Josh got on. I think it's time for, I talked to you tonight, I've talked to Dr. Ward, if we set up a retreat, have our facilitator from BOSI's, she does a great job, you people, she did a great job, Amanda. And I also feel we have not evaluated ourselves. We keep talking about it, but we never give it out. You've got different copies of it, I've given you the state copy, I have given you the one that BOSI's used, and Paul, I believe, changed some of the things, and it should go out, and that should be part of our discussion. We've never talked about ourselves and what we could do to improve. So I think, Michael, you're the president, and you, if you can keep in touch with Jill, she could do a Google, do we want it on the weekend, do we want it at the beginning of the summer, do you want us? But I truly believe we got to do these two things, especially with the new superintendent. And he would have ideas too, so we would give a lot of ideas to Amanda, and she would do a nice retreat. I think it will help us to be stronger.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as we get to the end of the budget season, that hopefully we can all send the emails like Bob had said, but I think it's also important to make sure that we encourage our legislators and the governor to get us a budget on time, so we aren't sitting here guessing in a few weeks when we are required by state law to approve a budget to go to a vote. So it's really important. I've heard that they may be a week or two late, and it needs to be wrapped up well before the 21st, so we're able to give our honest recommendation to our constituents.
I just really quick, piggyback on what Dr. Ward said about the show, it was so good. It was amazing how talented these kids are, and not just, I mean, yes, the actors, the singers, but the music, the pit, like, and just the fun stuff they had, and the 4D, like, our 4D is, that crew is amazing. So just wanted to give a shout out to everybody involved there, because it was awesome.
I just wanted to echo a similar sentiment with Once Upon a Mattress, I was there as well, and it was amazing, and it kind of reminded me of Flair this weekend on Friday and Saturday, that Rox Middle is going to be doing Shrek Jr. So if you, if you're interested in doing that, it's going to be on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Saturday at 2:00 PM. And I also want to congratulate the new National Art Society inductees, they're going to be inducted tomorrow. I know we got an invitation to attend, so if you're willing, you should definitely try to, as I feel like it's definitely an honor to be a part of National Art Society, I know I am, and it's just the small things, the small ways to volunteer and help your community that are introduced to kids, and I think that's an amazing way to get the kids in our district involved. And speaking of volunteering, we're currently fundraising for a local business called Maan Paz that sells like, you know, gourmet popcorn, so if you're interested in buying a bag, you can talk to me after the meeting, I'm collecting, you know, money for it. So I also wanted to talk about a survey that's available on our district website, kind of related to what Mr. Crabtree was saying, a way to help, you know, our new superintendent and kind of our board in our district to kind of function the way that we really want it to. And I also wanted to say on April 1st, 2nd and 3rd, there's going to be a kickoff to kindergarten, where there's going to be in-person registration of, you know, new kindergartners, new young kids that are going to be in our district, and that's going to be really amazing to see. There's also going to be volunteers there to kind of keep the kids occupied while their parents are registering them, so that's a cool thing to see. And just kind of with BOSI's, what we heard here today, it's just amazing what our kids are doing. Obviously, just last weekend with the unfortunate tragedy that happened with one of our students, it really hit me, because I have a sibling that's in sixth grade, so it's, just seeing the resilience of our kids is like amazing, and, you know, I'm kind of lost for words. And I just wanted to say, next Monday, we don't have school, and I just want to thank everyone on the board, kind of thank our district, and just thank our kids, especially for, you know, just being as strong as they are. So, thank you.
Okay, we have some routine action items this evening. Consideration to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Paul, second from Mark, any questions? All those in favor, that is unanimous. Uh, Group B, C and D together, the consideration of classification and placement of students. Do I have a motion to place those before us? Beth and Paul, any questions? All those in favor, that is... Acknowledgement of the business reports for September and October 2024. Do I have a motion to place those and accept them before us? Josh and Mandy, any questions? All those in favor, that is... And declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus, do I have a motion to place that before us? Josh, Beth, any questions? Those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you. Hey, we have the notice of the public hearing and annual meeting of voters. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for the notice of public hearing? Paul and Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor, that is... Couple of rule calls this evening. The first one is for the vehicle proposition for May 20th. Do I have a motion to approve the vehicle bonding proposition? Bob and questions?
Want to make a comment, because I had a chance to go to Balden'sville last week and tour their transportation thing, and they were putting in, Don talked about this, our new buses are going to have this compartment underneath, like when we go on trips, it's amazing. I saw it and how they were putting, can't wait to get some of those. Just amazing, so that our students can have more, we can have more on the bus, and put their things underneath. Very good.
Motion for that? Okay. Yes? Thank you. And the next one is to approve the resolution for the ballot propositions, also for May 20th. Motion to place that before us? Mark and Josh, any questions? Yes? Next up, we have the second reading and adoption of the Board of Education policies that have been reworked with Erie One BOSI's. Do I have a motion to place that before? Mark and Josh, any questions or comments? Favor? Request to approve the '25-'26 North Syracuse Central School District calendar. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Josh? Amanda, any questions? All those in favor, that is unanimous. We do have a gift this evening. A gift of $45,000 was received by the district from the Cicero Elementary PTG. This gift will be used to construct two playgrounds at Cicero Elementary, and this donation represents the initial contribution to the project, with a subsequent donation to be made following a final fundraiser set to occur this spring. So do I have a motion to accept with gratitude that gift? Josh and Mark, any questions? Favor, that is... That is unanimous. Iteration of contract award for Sourcewell Contract. Do I have a motion to approve the insurance, the issuance of the contract? Is. Josh? Beth, any questions or comments? All those. That is unanimous. Resolution authorizing attendance locations for Lake Shore Road Elementary students for the 2025, 26 school year. This resolution is because the building is not going to be finished. Yeah. Margaret's again, next year. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Paul? Comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know that there's folks out in the district that have been asking questions, so I would just encourage the administration to continue to have things go out there as, you know, we to find out how delays are going to impact the project. And I know you all have been doing that, so keep that up.
Close.
And sorry, I'll just mention that we have a meeting at Lake Shore tomorrow after school for folks to hear some of the updates, so.
All those in favor? Recommendation for approval of the contract between the North Syracuse Central School District and the North Syracuse Teaching Assistance and Licensed Practical Nurses Unit. Do I have a motion to approve that contract? Bob and Josh, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. And recommendation to approve the separation agreement between an employee of the North Syracuse Central School District and the CSEA Local 100 North Syracuse Teacher Aid Unit. Motion to place that before us? Mark and Amanda, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is. And just to acknowledge some retirements this evening. Patrick Kane, a bus driver, is retiring with 5.7 years of service. Linda Weber, a teacher aide, is retiring with 25.6 years of service. And Marion Knight, a teacher aide, is retiring with 28.3 years of service. So thank you all for your contributions to this school district and the community and wish you all a long, happy and healthy retirement. We need an executive session before personnel. Do I have a motion to accept personnel A is submitted? Josh? Beth, any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Do I have a motion to accept personnel B is submitted? Josh and Amanda, any question? Those in favor? That is unanimous. And personnel C, do I have a motion to approve personnel C as submitted? Josh, any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. At this time, I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing three personnel matters with no action to follow. Do I have a second? Beth? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.